Is everyone ready?
So I'd like to call to order the school board meeting, Merrimack School District, SAU 26, for November 21st, 2022. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just to let everyone know that Board Member Ken Martin is excused this evening. Good evening, everyone. We want to open up with a happy Thanksgiving week for all in Merrimack to our teachers, students, staff, families, administration. We're all looking forward to a wonderful, restful time and time to be thankful. And I know the students are really excited to have a few days off from school before we head into December, so happy Thanksgiving week. All right, we will start with public participation. If you would like to participate, you may come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. If you are a student, you do not need to state your address. Do we have any public participation tonight? Thank you. All right, then moving on to recognitions.
Tonight, we do not have any recognitions, but I anticipate we will have some in the not-too-distant future.
Excellent. So then we will move on to the superintendent update.
We have a few tonight, and the staff has been very enthusiastic about forwarding positive news about students and themselves. First of all, I want to congratulate Matthew O'Brien, who was a teacher at the high school for successfully defending his dissertation last week for his PhD in Educational Leadership and Policy at Southern New Hampshire. The High School Guidance Department, in conjunction with the New Hampshire Higher Education Association, sponsored a I Am College Bound Day for seniors on Wednesday, November 16th. Twenty-five students participated, and 58 college applications were submitted. All New Hampshire schools offered free applications on that day, and one of the students will be receiving a $500 scholarship. The high school food classes made and donated over 50 dozen rolls for St. James Food Pantry Thanksgiving baskets, so we congratulate them on a wonderful gesture. The Merrimack Middle School Drama Club wrapped up its first performance of the 2023 school year. The issue selection was a psychological thriller called Trap by Stephen Gregg. Students performed to a packed house on both Friday and Saturday evenings, so congratulations to the middle school students who participated. The volleyball program at the high school was recognized over the weekend for the community's service efforts of raising $900 for the Merrimack High School teacher, who unfortunately recently passed away. And also, the Merrimack Varsity Program was recognized for an overall GPA, this is outstanding, of 3.98 as a team for the 2021-2022 school year. So congratulations on that outstanding performance. We have just a couple more, if you'll excuse me. On Saturday, Granite State Challenge Team gathered at Plymouth Regional High School with other schools from around the state to take the qualifying test for the Granite State Challenge. This is the first time since 2019 that the event, known as Super Saturday, was held in person. Fortunately, we're back to in-person events. Only the teams with the top 14 scores get an automatic bid in the televised rounds, and Merrimack has qualified each of the last nine years. And so the team will find out shortly whether or not they qualify once again. Senior Cameron Fredette competed in the New England High School Cross Country Championship on Saturday, November 12th, at Pontiac Anstead High School in North Situate, Rhode Island. Cameron placed 84th out of 260 runners. Congratulations on an outstanding finish. Coach and Merrimack High School PE Teacher Amber Murphy was voted the Division One Girls' Soccer Coach of the Year. Chop Shop Robotics Team hosted the Merrimack First Lego League qualifier this weekend. They had 16 teams from New Hampshire come in and compete. Nine of the teams qualified for the state competition, and they were all very commendable of the hosts, Merrimack hosts, for that particular event. And let's see, I believe that is, oh, from Rich Loftus, who at the Merrimack Middle School. You know, sometimes students need a little bit of diversity in terms of kind of a daily routine and how they see the school and the world. And Rich Loftus, who works at the middle school in a student intervention capacity, took some time and engaged a student in some landscaping and weeding around the front entrance of the building in a small amount of time during the school day. And sometimes that little break and that connection means an awful lot to a student. And so congratulate Rich on that particular effort. So once again, outstanding staff, outstanding students doing wonderful things for the schools and for the community. And also, like you, I want to wish everyone happy Thanksgiving. And know that I am very thankful, at this point in my career, to be working with all of you, because it's a great team that we have moving forward with Amy, Matt, Alyssa, and the entire Central Office staff and our entire staff. And I'm very thankful for all of that, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Comments from the board? Then we'll move on to the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Update.
I'll just echo, happy Thanksgiving to everyone as well. As Bill said, I feel so lucky to have joined this team back in July. I feel like I've been here forever, which is a really nice feeling.
We want you to feel that way.
I know, I do, man. Thank you so much. And I'm just really looking forward to Thursday, watching the Macy's Day Parade, putting on The Carpenters, right? Let's just really kick it off right. So I wanted to let you know that last Tuesday, we had a great last meeting of the Vision of a Learner Committee. That team spent some time reflecting on the journey through the research that they did for that task force. They did a lot of interviewing, looking at data, as they tried to capture the community's aspirations for all of our students across the district. The group considered next steps, which is how we're going to now roll out the vision to all of the different stakeholder groups and encourage them to support this work, as we hope it becomes embedded in all of the work that we do. A full school board presentation on the Vision of a Learner will be set on the December 19th board meeting when we're back here in the Matthew Thornton Room. Later on the agenda this evening, there are a few topics for discussion and consideration. I hope you know that we are continuously evaluating and trying to improve our systems that serve students. So we'll be looking tonight as at a curriculum review cycle, which is part of Goal Three of your board's established goals for improving learning outcomes. And we're also going to talk about homework and the use of this tool to provide essential practice and feedback that supports student learning. Thank you.
Any comments from the board? All right, then we will move on to Assistant Superintendent for Business Update, Matt Chevonal.
On a completely different note, I have been knee-deep in working with the operating budget, you know, making some assumptions that I know you're gonna want to go there anyway, before I hear the input. You know, you gotta build everything first. I mean, it's like brick by brick by brick. Then you guys come in, you give us the direction you want us to go in, and then we kind of enhance things. But there's gonna be some challenges. You know, technology, I've been working with Jason Pelletier. You remember, because of COVID, we went to one-to-one, and we spent around $3 million in ESAR funds to get us there. Now it's time where the life cycle of those machines, if you want to continue to main one-to-one, it's gonna start costing some real money. We have some needed maintenance issues that have to be taken care of, because we did in years past take a little break from doing that, and now they're kind of coming, coming forward. And Dave Zicky is like the, pretty much the easiest one to just say, you know, increase the cost of food by 50%, because that's when it's going up, you know? I mean, that's only a joke, but it almost seems that way. So a lot of things going on in the background to get ready, and we hope in the end we'll meet your needs. And I'm looking forward to the Budget Committee joint meeting to kind of get an idea. That's the first time ever in the history of Merrimack, so I think that's gonna be, for me, I think it's gonna be really fun to see you guys interact. I'm just gonna sit back and eat popcorn while you people have fun.
Be interesting.
It's nice having, you know, Laurie on the board and Chuck. Chuck Moore being the chairman. I know you guys have a very good rapport, Chuck does with everybody, so I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's gonna be a great meeting. Thank you.
Any comments?
I just have one. So as we talk about technology and maintaining one-to-one, I would love to hear from our Technology Director on, you know, options, you know? What are the options going forward? You know, when a student comes in as a freshman, they buy their computer or, and then they maintain it, and then they get to keep it? Like, what can we do so we can maintain one-to-one? What are some options? Like, here's option one, here's option two, here's option three, so we could, you know, say to the, to the board and then to our public, like, look at these, these are the options we're looking at, but we want it, we have to be 21st century. We have to. The technology is a big part of our world today, so we can't go backwards. So how can we maintain and go forward?
And Laurie, if I may, that's a really great point, because we have the numbers with the district picking up the cost of everything for like the next four or five years.
Right.
And to provide some options to kind of temper that tax impact, you know, it's gonna be good to have the conversation. Jason will be ready for that, because Jason knows what the gross cost is right now. Yeah, thank you.
All right, moving on to the school board update. So I think it's important, as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday, that we take, all take time to reflect for what we're grateful for. And Kristen Armstrong said, "When we focus on gratitude, the tide of disappointment goes out and the tide of love rushes in." And as a board, we are so grateful for our teachers, our paras, our support staff, our coaches. Again, this year, we had one of our teachers in our school district, Susan Bradford, who was a finalist for Teacher of the Year, but most of us agree that she is Teacher of the Year. She's amazing, but there's so many teachers that do so much for our district. And so we are grateful for their dedication to our parents who support our schools, who show up, who go the extra mile, who bring in the Kleenex and the, you know, the cookies and all of that for our students, for the joy of learning. And then, you know, all the things that Bill was pointing out today on all the community's service projects and how much they actually bring to our school. Our school community for supporting our teachers' contract last year, and to continue to support our schools. Of course, our administrators, our SAU, our principals, AP, directors, our superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, and Business Administrator for their exceptional knowledge and ability to stretch for the Merrimack TV, for broadcasting us every week. But also, I'm very grateful for the school board and for the members of the school board, because we make a very conscious decision to set goals and to keep kids first, and we're doing that. And I'm just grateful for the, this team effort. So happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to sharing with my family, and I know you are with yours. Any other comments from the board? All right, thank you. Student Representative update.
Just a quick reminder for anyone who purchased from the Class of 2023 Texas Roadhouse Rolls fundraiser, tomorrow is the last possible pickup, 11:30 to 3:30. If you don't pick up your rolls before 3:30 tomorrow, you aren't gonna get them. So make sure you pick up them.
And there might be some disappointed people come Thursday. They didn't get their rolls. All right, moving on to Old Business, 2023-24 Budget Priorities.
At our last meeting, we presented you with a little recap of your 2223 current fiscal year priorities that you expressed prior to the development of our budget. Then we had the goals on the document that we provided, that we came up with jointly at the June goal-setting meeting, and provided an opportunity for you last week to provide some input on your budget priorities for the 2324 school year. And so I thought we would take just a moment to check in with you to see if, from the last meeting, if there was anything else that emerged that came to mind, because we want to make sure we capture those things that are truly valued by you with respect to student learning and the hiring, retention of our staff. And so you had school safety, you had research-based reading program, filling vacant teacher and parent-educated positions, eliminating the Brentwood Building, Performing Arts Center that Ken mentioned, the Capital Reserve Fund, and analysis of the current appropriations to assess possible savings and reallocation, which we engaged in, in fact, at today's budget meeting, and we will do throughout the budget meeting. So doesn't, didn't mean for a long or protracted conversation, it's just that if you wanted another bite at the apple, so to speak, if there was anything else that came to your mind from the last meeting, we can articulate that, and we will add it to the documents that we bring forward to the joint meeting between ourselves and the Budget Committee.
Jenna?
Well, I would like to, because that's the meeting that I missed. So I went back and watched it, and I had a list in front of me of all my things, right? And then I just would, I spent the most of the time going, okay, got, okay, okay. So basically, what I'd like to say is, you all did an excellent job of articulating where I think our priorities need to be. The one thing I don't see on this list in front of me, and I don't want it to fall through the wayside, and I'm pretty sure it came from, now I'm going off my memory, but from something that the district had put out and then was reiterated by the board, but an ELO coordinator for the high school. I'm pretty sure I saw that somewhere. I'm not making that up, right? Yeah.
Yes, may I say, you will be reviewing a job description in the next few meetings, and that job description will be for a Pathways to Graduation, a Director of Pathways to Graduation and Extended Learning Opportunities.
Yes.
Because there is some intersection of those job responsibilities. So we've worked at developing what we think is a very sound job description that will probably, probably be ready at the next, your next meeting to take a look at and approve.
That was one that I, that I feel very strongly about. So I was glad that it was mentioned. I was glad that it was put up there. It certainly aligns with our goals and our priorities that we talked about this summer. So I just want to say, I actually laughed out loud when Ken said Performing Arts Center, because, you know, I have a theater kid, I mean, who will be long gone before anyone ever gets a Performing Arts Center. And, you know, we can dream.
Well, you know, to be honest with you, we've been talking about that for a while.
Oh, no doubt.
It's been on the radar. It hasn't come to fruition, and it hasn't made it on the CIP, but throughout the Planning and Building Committee, in the years we've been there, it has been spoken about.
Yeah, yeah. So it's, it's fun to dream and fun to think about how it could eventually become something. But I thought everybody did a great job, and I just wanted to reiterate that their priorities echoed mine almost exactly. Like, by the time I was done, I had crossed off everything on my list.
Laurie?
So going back to what Jenna's saying, so this year, and Bill and I've had this conversation, so the Adult Ed Grant for the DOE, which is a three-year grant, comes available. The issue with the grant is that we would, we would start to do the work in January. You don't find out until May that you receive the money. So we would have to put the money in the budget, apply for the grant, so people would know that we're, we're trying to apply for this grant. We have, a lot of the factors would, would give us, you know, we have some kids that dropped out of high school. They need to have this support, and that person could pick up the ELOs. Like, so it would be like a dual job for them. They would do the ELOs and then alternate pathways. The money from the state's based on need, and, but again, just so the town understands, we're gonna have to put the line item in, and then if we get the grant, then we take it away. And then the other thing is, my, my brother Joey is a football coach, and he wants a weight room. And he said, "I didn't say we needed a bigger weight room." So I know that isn't on this capital improvement plan either, but I said I would say, you know, if we ever got a lot of money, a weight room is really needed, because the weight room they have is just too small for student athletes.
May I just say, the first time I met with the Athlete Director Mike Susie, that was his number one priority.
Yes.
You know, and it's kind of funny, because 20 years ago, we expanded that weight room. When we did the three-story addition, there was a little bit of renovation going on in there. I don't know if it was an expansion, but there was a renovation.
Yeah, renovation.
And now it's kind of like, it looks small then.
Yeah, so many kids, so many kids playing sports, which is a great thing, but they just need a bigger space.
But it's obvious when you look at it that it is not.
I hope he's watching right now. I did, when he asked me.
I just wanted to say, going back to what Jenna said, just so that the public understands this, we were asked by the chair to consider what our budget priorities were. We, as individuals, came up with our lists. We showed up, and our lists were so similar, and I think it just goes back to the unity of vision and direction that the board and Central Office have. And I think it's a really good place to be as we do this, because we do, we have a big wish list, we have some really critical needs, we have some hard choices. It's, it's gotta be balanced, both, and both the board, and I think when we meet with the Budget Committee, they will agree, are willing to do that hard work with administration. All right, moving on to Strategic Plan update.
I wanted to provide you with an update regarding when the Strategic Planning Committee is going to start meeting. In a previous memo, I think in early October, I had provided to the board a schedule. Unfortunately, we have hit a snag with the facilitator that we had contracted with, and at this time, Bill and I are actively working to secure services from another professional. As soon as we have someone secured, we'll let you know, and we'll bring forth a new and updated schedule. We're still hoping to start that work as soon as we can.
Any comments from the board? All right, let's move on to the Curriculum Review Cycle.
Thank you. As part of the Merrimack School District and School Board Goal Setting Meeting that we held this summer, we drafted Goal Number Three, which focuses on improving learning outcomes by ensuring our instruction is responsive to the varied needs of our student population. Strategic Objective Number Three specifically relates to developing a process for ongoing curriculum updating and revision, and also including a timeline for each curriculum area. I've provided in your packet a draft of a curriculum review cycle that I would love your review and feedback on. Some highlights, I'm proposing a six-year cycle, which captures four phases of review. In Year One, we would be in reviewing and researching what our current curriculum is already offering, and then what are the best practices that are emerging from the field. We'd be looking in Year Two to do some resource selection and program planning, and some, perhaps some pre-budgeting. Implementation, planning, and assessment in Year Three. And this is where the board has continued to talk about competencies. This is where that assessment would come in, once teachers have developed the curriculum, have had a chance to look at it and do some piloting. Then after that initial year, they would be looking to draft the assessment pieces that go along with that. And then Years Four through Six would be monitoring, refining, and sustaining that curriculum, providing high-quality PD, continuously looking at whatever the new and updated standards are for a particular content area. Certainly, we wouldn't come, become complacent if something new emerged from the field. So right now, what we're looking at is ELA is being considered K to 12 right now. That's Reading, Writing, Listening, and Speaking. Science and Social Studies is in its second year of implementation. And just to be fair, there are some things happening in Year One and Year Two in Science and Social Studies, just because this cycle, you know, wasn't clearly established at that time. Beginning in the summer, perhaps even a little sooner, if we can engage some, some teachers, we'd be looking at our math curriculum, K to 12. And those of you that have been on the board for a while, you know that they did a complete curriculum rewrite of math not so long ago. So we don't, we don't anticipate that to be a heavy lift. It's really just getting it into EduPlanet and realigned with the programs that we've been using. Also looking to do Unified Arts. PE and Health is well underway. Art and Music has not started, to my knowledge, but, and also World Language has had some work with EduPlanet and in their curriculum work. And then looking at 2024, 2025 as business tech ed facts, and how SEL is going to be layered within the current curriculum areas, as well as the standalone guidance curriculum that provided at all, all levels. So this is for your review. I'm happy to take your questions, or if, you know, you want to take a look at it and give me feedback at the next meeting.
Comments?
I mean, I'll start by just saying, like, this has been so badly needed. Just to see this laid out is so, it's just such a ginormous undertaking, and I'm so grateful for the hard work that you've done to try to really create this cycle that we can look at and that we can, we can really predict what we're gonna go through over the next few years, and how that's going to look and where that's going to get us. As a board member, this is exactly what I wanted to see. So thank you very much for all your hard work, and, and I think you, and, and everyone behind you, you know, that is, I know you speak for many people when you come to the table, so I just want to say how grateful I am for all of the hard work that we're doing. I know I couldn't see it in the meeting the other day, but just hearing EduPlanet 21 and how that all goes, it's, it was really good to just hear that we're moving forward in such a profound way. So thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Matt?
Yeah. I'm gonna throw you a compliment, too. I just whispered to Amy when I saw this, "I love this." This is the capital improvement plan for curriculum. And having, seeing this in living color, for me, with dates and everything like that, even if we blow a year and we're a little bit, you know, but it's there, and it's a goal to work towards, and you know what the sequence is. For me, being on the business side, curriculum was always this mysterious world that I was never allowed to ask questions about. It was done under the cover of darkness, not really, I'm kidding. But with Amy here, it's all laid out, it's all there. It's, it's, and this is another word that I don't like to use, but I'm gonna use it anyway, it's all transparent. It's right there, you know? So it's, I think it's fantastic.
Thanks, Matt.
That'll be $10.
Laurie?
So, so I like it, too. The only thing that stands out to me just a little bit is just the competencies, because as we, I think as we move forward to start to identify competencies in all of the areas, I think that it's not gonna be 2425 that competencies, like I think the curriculum and alignment. So the way this looks, it looks like, oh, we're not gonna do competencies in business ed until 2425, where actually our competency work is kind of a different silo that aligns with the curriculum.
And I think what most, most folks do, and I'm sure Bill has been through this, is that you look at your assessments, you know, as you're going through Year One, Year Two, Year Three, Four, Five, and Six, and you're saying, are we assessing the student progress in ways that are meaningful? And to your point, since I, you know, joined this team, there is a sense of urgency around developing competencies. And I think in talking with Bill, we would certainly want a professional, someone who's gone through that work, you know, to, you know, start in, in small, manageable increments, because if we just start saying, everybody should do competencies, there's, you know, we want to have an intentional focus. We want there to be commonality from K to 12. So, you know, certainly, to your point, we're not going to wait until 2025. It would be on an ongoing basis. And then revised, once, you know, that we feel more comfortable about the curriculum implementation, teachers are looking at their instruction and, you know, looking at their assessments, infusing the, the importance of universal design for learning. So we would make sure that our competencies are also reflective of that as well.
Right. And, and that's my point. Like, so, you know, when we talk about competencies, we've said this a million times, like, New Hampshire schools, they, they rolled out from the DOE, they rolled out very, very bumpy, very gray, not a lot of information. So even school So even school districts within school districts have different competencies for different, for humanities or for math. And so to get that alignment, but as the work starts to get, you know, like let's say we said the high school, to get the whole high school understanding that competencies are skills. That's what they are. They're not curriculum. They're actually skills that you need to have and you need to demonstrate and you need evidence for. Everybody kind of get that idea and then start like, like you said, like we're going to start with English and we're going to work that. And once we get that group understanding it, we can move forward. Good.
May I just say, we've, Amy and I have had some, some very good conversations and we want, we're going to move forward with the ELOs. As you know, that, that's part of the job description we'll bring in, but also the competencies that she mentioned. Um, we want to bring in some real experts to help facilitate those conversations. What we don't want is window dressing. We want real authentic learning opportunities and competencies that you will be proud of and the community will be proud of and will benefit the students greatly.
When I listened. When I listened to the meeting, that was the thing I wrote down. We don't want window dressings. And in my kitchen, I stood there and went, yes. So yes, we do not want window dressings. No more window dressings.
And I would add to that, um, just as an example, and Lori and I have discussed this in another district. As a parent, when those competencies rolled out in 2005, 2006, my son was a victim of poorly done rushed competencies. And so I absolutely support getting someone in who is an expert who can help all of us institute competencies that are genuine and authentic, align with our curriculum well, so that we don't have the kind of experience that, that my child had as we roll those out. Great. All right, let's move on to everyone's favorite conversation, homework.
I think Bill and I are going to tag team this one. Hey, Phil. So like many districts, we have been taking a careful look at our systems and processes, curriculums and protocols to ensure they're meeting the needs of students. Um, to that end, teachers primarily at the middle and high school level are advocating for a change um, to provide extrinsic support for the completion of independent practice in the form of homework. Uh, specifically, this would mean updating the homework protocol that was provided under a, a previous assistant superintendent back in 2017, I believe. Um, and that was levered, layered, layered over the homework policy that the board adopted back in 2008. Um, at this time, we're not proposing any change to the policy. Um, more just how the policy is operationalized on a day-to-day basis in the buildings. Um, the update to the protocol would really focus on that homework could be graded. Right now, the philosophy or the protocol is that it cannot be graded. Um, and teachers are feeling like that is problematic, um, to encourage students to complete the practice. Um, we do have some survey results where teachers have been sharing their experience, trying to get students to complete their homework. And it is not very positive, to be honest. We would be looking to update the protocol so that homework could be no more, say, than 10% of a student's overall grade. Um, so some of the concerns that you may have that a student could, you know, potentially fail or it would overinflate their grade. I know that was a concern that the previous assistant superintendent and central office folks and perhaps even the board, I don't, I don't know, I wasn't here then, Matt was. Um, if, you know, if that would be a concern, we'd really be looking at ensuring that it's manageable. Um, but also encouraging students to complete the practice. Because what teachers are finding is that it's very challenging for them to move forward in the curriculum when students haven't completed the practice that they need to become proficient with the skills and content. Um, and so as we look to fill in, um, our gaps in learning that it established during COVID, um, this is one way that the school and home could partner together, um, to be able to move forward in our goals to improve student learning. Now, the importance of differentiation, as well as the expectation that the amount of assigned homework would be reasonable and manage, manageable would of course continue. And an emphasis will be placed on teachers providing timely feedback to students on their submitted assignments. I know that that was a concern, um, that when will those grades show up in power school and so on. Um, this revised protocol, we would be suggesting that it starts at the beginning of second semester, which would be January of 2023.
And they, oh, Lori.
Okay. So I was going to say, so this kind of goes back really to your timeline. Because I think the homework policy came out of standardized, standards-based education. But I feel like what Merrimack did is just like, we took one piece of the puzzle and we just took that one piece. And so there was many other pieces that had to come together for, uh, the homework policy. Because it was never supposed to be homework doesn't count. It was supposed to be homework counts. And if you, um, do all of your homework and then you fail the test, we're going to give you more formatives and then we're going to base the grade on the test. That never happened. That was supposed to be what it was supposed to look like. So, um, I think that, well, you know, when we talk about grading and assessment, what we really want is we want all kids to be engaged and we want all kids to have mastery. And so if you had a student in the past, like, like Amy was saying, that, you know, comes in, they're brilliant. They take the test, they get all hundreds, but oh, you missed 10 homework assignments. You got a C. That's, that's just the other way, but that's not really the norm, but that's sort of the intent behind the homework policy. So again, I liked what you said, teachers need to embrace multiple assessments. It's critical that they have practice times. Formative assessments are used to identify and find the gaps in student learning. But not only the gaps in student learning, the, um, students that are being very successful need to be challenged more. So when they're doing formative assessments and, and the students are getting a hundred, a hundred, they know, okay, maybe we need to give them some differentiated instructions, some different questions, because they're, they need to grow a different way. Again, we, homework needs to be challenging, relevant and model real life situations. We, we, you know, when I was a teacher a hundred years ago, we sometimes gave homework because we were supposed to give homework four times a week. And so I go to page, you know, at the end, you guys probably remember chapter 26, do question odds or something. Because we were supposed to give homework and now we're saying homework is a formative and it's going to be a part of learning, but it's not just you have to have homework, but it has to be relevant. So, um, and I, and I like what you said, teachers have to give feedback, but they do that all the time. Like, you know, when we're doing formative assessments, it happens in the classroom every single second of the classroom. And then the summative, you know, that quiz or test, that's like, did they get it or did they not get it? And, and when we get, stop being punitive and we start being, how do students learn? And how do we get them to know so they master information? Then it, it's a better system. So I, I, I appreciate this and I, I agree. I think we, we went too far ahead and we need to pull back and we need to build our competency system and, and put homework back into the.
And, and that's what most of the research indicates also is that there is value in homework. And as, as one of the, um, one of the articles that we read on, um, that gave a summary of the meta-analysis of some of the researchers. Um, person said, what, what is there in life that we don't gain proficiency through from, from practicing? And homework is an extraordinarily important component of, of learning. Um, Professor Harris Cooper from Duke University did probably the most widely, um, accepted meta-analysis of about 30 research studies that had to do with homework. And, uh, those research studies did establish a correlation between homework and student achievement. Now that correlation was certainly higher in grades seven through 12 than it was in the elementary levels. But in, in addition to that correlation, certainly as, as you said, Lori and others, um, it has to be meaningful. Can't be busy work. Ideally, should be differentiated to an extent, has to be somewhat time-bound. That most researchers found that at the high school level, when you start to go over two hours in homework, there is a diminishing return in terms of student fatigue and sometimes student resistance. You know, for the most part in elementary grade levels is the old standard 10%, uh, 10-minute rule, excuse me, that's been around for many, many years of 10 minutes, 10, increasing 10 minutes for every grade level. Starting off in grade one with 10 minutes, grade two, 20 minutes, grade three, 30 minutes, et cetera. Uh, most of the norms in middle school, according to the research and the meta-analysis, uh, was about 90, uh, 60 to 90 minutes of homework in the middle school, up to two hours at, at the high school level. Uh, and I think we need to be cognizant of that. But there has to be some value established to it in terms of a percentage of the grade. The meta-analysis also indicated that, that homework should, should be somewhat of an exploratory nature and a creative nature, right? That it shouldn't be, uh, just all to stroll and practice, as you said, do the odd, you know, go to the back and do the odd numbers or the even numbers tonight. And so somebody does 25 or 30 problems and, but there has to be some, some exploratory nature to it, some creative and innovative nature to it. Uh, interesting, interestingly, um, when I think about homework, um, I think about the research done by Diag Gregerson and Christiansen in a book called The Innovator's DNA. Uh, that was a, a book that, um, the researchers interviewed about 3,000 corporate personnel and their practices. And some people think that, well, people who are particularly creative and engage in a lot of innovative thought have that innate ability that they're born with. Well, they identified five skills that can be worked on with students and staff to develop a more creative mindset and innovative mindset. Uh, and so that, that can be an interesting part of, of homework also. And so, um, we enjoy taking a look at the, at the research. But I think, as you said, and Amy indicated, we're on the right track in terms of restoring the credibility of homework with respect to, um, its, its correlation and its use as a grade, um, in grading in the school district.
So I want to say two things about what you just said. First of all, I'm a research nut too. I had all my journal articles ready to go. You probably saw this one, homework works if homework quality is high. And as a teacher, I want to give homework that is meaningful. And isn't, uh, I, I don't like busy work, so I'm not going to ask my students to do busy work. But it, it's been kind of trial and error. And which is kind of been good because it's forced me to be creative. It's forced me to think about my practices and things like that. And so I think if we have that emphasis, emphasis that yes, we want them to practice what they're learning and skills, especially in math and science. Uh, but let's cut them up with some creative homework ways to do it. I think students will have much more buy-in and we'll see that achievement increase. But I also have some anecdotal thoughts related to the pandemic. We heard stories across the nation. Kids did no work. Kids got a grade anyway. And we've lost that growth mindset and putting even a small percentage on that grade gives an incentive. Yes, it's an incentive to do the homework, but it encourages a growth mindset. I want to learn. We want our students to want to learn, but let's just face it. Sometimes they don't want to learn how to graph a quadratic equation. But we will, we want them at least to come into the classroom ready to be challenged, even if it's not something they particularly want to learn. And I think putting some incentive on learning or mastering those skills will encourage having that growth mindset versus just a, I want to just get by and get the best grade I can and dump that out of my mind come summer.
It can be a very interesting means of developing a student's intrinsic motivation. And that's what we're looking to do.
And just to add to what Lori had talked about earlier, I was a math teacher for a long time. And it is, it is, it is a real challenge to provide the independent practice that's absent of the classroom, where students are actually going to have to apply those skills without giving them a structured opportunity to do that. Um, and I think teaching a growth mindset that time management, perseverance. You know, in a few weeks, we're going to talk more about the vision of a learner. But one of the words that we talked about was resilient. You know, you really want kids to have an activity or have an assignment, as Bill said, that is perhaps challenging, um, which encourages them to think about things outside the box, coming to class the next day with excited to share their thoughts and ideas, um, that, that aren't just happening during that block of time. And it's impossible to recreate all of that within a 45, 50, whether it's, and maybe it's a block. It just isn't possible to do all of that and provide the rich experience that we really are hoping students have.
Jenna.
Um, so I think there's a lot of parents that are probably standing and clapping at the thought that this might change. Because if I've heard anything on the sidelines of sports things or theater things or whatever, I have heard more parents, if I had a dollar, honestly, we, we could pay for a performing arts center for every time that a parent said to me, you know, Merrimack might not count homework, but I tell my kids it counts in my house. And I'm one of those parents, right? I have a child who maybe thought homework could be turned in whenever that per child felt like it could be turned in. I'm sure his teachers were as frustrated with him as I was. And there were times when I thought to myself, oh my word, hold him accountable. And it didn't happen, right? He, he turned out fine. It's all fine. But, um, you know, there are, parents, I think, want that because some of us are battling it in our own house. And I don't mean presently, I just mean truly us. It's, I'm not speaking just personally. We want the ability to have that reflected in their grade so that we aren't the ones telling them, yes, you will do this homework. No, you can't just not do your math homework. That's not going to work. Like, it's not optional, you know? And I think that that's huge. And I, I have personally, as a parent and even as a board member, I've never really understood the difference between policy and protocol. Like, because it, it got muddied, very muddied about what was clear and what was not clear. And if we could clarify that, that would be a huge win for this district. I think a lot of parents are going to be very grateful. I think we definitely have the policy that will protect us from all of the things that we didn't want to happen. But I think a lot of us parents would appreciate a return to some accountability, um, which has been lacking. Um, because it's real, you know, you don't go to college and they say, well, you know, turn it in when you want to turn it in. And I'm not saying that's what our teachers are doing, but in, in a sense, they've kind of had to, you know? And it's not good for the teachers either, right? The teachers are then scrambling to collect late things and, 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 and giving timely feedback is impossible because they're buried in every kid's 50 late things. And it's become, it's, it's spiraled a little, um, to a level that I think isn't a win for anybody. And so I'm glad that we're looking to, to take some, walk back some of that and, and change our protocol and the way we're going to do it. And I, I think that will allow for more timely feedback because one thing I've seen is that doesn't always happen. And I don't, and I don't fault the teachers oftentimes, because sometimes it's the kid, got the kid, the, the homework assignment in late when they wanted to, had there been accountability, you know, it might've been different. So I think there's a lot of parents that are going to be really happy with this change. I would just like to add that the majority of teachers that I've talked to, it is really about providing responsive instruction. That without some actual evidence about where a student is, they can't prepare for that student appropriately. So if they're not doing the homework and they have to wait until there's some type of summative, whether it's a quiz or test, to realize that a very simple skill or some small misunderstanding, which could have been caught with a, a, a quick homework assignment. Um, that was really what, what they, what they're hoping for is to make sure that the instruction that they provide to students is what they need at that time, which was really refreshing. It was really about learning. It's not about, you know, that they want kids to be hunched over a desk for hours at a time. It really is, they want to maximize the amount of time that they can, um, prepare lessons that are engaging and innovative and fun, but at the same time, moving kids forward. Um, just, and you know, both, all of you kind of alluded to, you know, the next step. So I just want to talk a little bit about what I would imagine is us really looking at how this would roll out at the middle and high school, providing scaffolding to kids who perhaps this is a new, um, system for them. They've maybe never done homework, you know, perhaps, and families are at different places where some do require their kids to sit at a table and complete the work, others don't, you know? So we want to provide, you know, a runway, so to speak, of, you know, when this will start to count. Um, encouraging teachers to be forthcoming with the, the students and their families so that they know what to expect, um, which is also, I think, part of the policy, but was cut out during the protocol of 2017. So, um, Bill and I will, you know, be meeting with teams. Um, I go to the, um, the building leadership team at the high school. I've gone a couple of times, um, and then also meeting with people at the middle school. So, but we will need family communication to let us know.
So, but we will need family communication to let us know, you know, how is it going? Because as a teacher, you might assign something that you would think would take ten minutes, fifteen minutes. We do not want kids to be spending two hours on one assignment. So we'll have to build in, you know, some of those structures and scaffolds of how families can say, you know, my student did all they could do independently, really, because we don't want parents to feel like they have to do the homework. It really is practice for the student. And I think one of the part of that communication, just thinking through all of that is, you know, asking the parents, we, what you just said, but also please, you know, help your student. As we all know, let me just use an example, Math Excel, which is a Pearson product, which a lot of schools use for math. You can have the math open for fifty four minutes, but you weren't actively doing the homework. And so we want to encourage parents to, they don't need to be standing over their child's shoulder, but ensure that your child is actually participating in the homework. And then if it is taking too long, that is definitely the teacher needs to hear. Either there's something that needs to be helped or maybe the assignment was just a little too challenging. So that gives good feedback for the teacher.
If I, because I was here during that interesting period in time, listening to Mr. Bevel speak over and over and over again. And initially, there was the thought in Merrimack that the amount of homework was five to six hours a night. That's what I heard on the street. And so this was kind of put in play. I can give you the whole entomology of how this came about, but that's not important. But what we did was just put the needle on the other end, saying, if you don't want to do homework, you don't have to do homework, but here's homework and it's not graded anymore. Now, to me personally, I had a little bit of an issue with that. And people would talk to me and I would say, I do have an issue with that because I think it should be counted. I think it should be graded. I think it undermined the teachers who are trying to get kids to learn. And the only way you can learn is, a lot of times, it's drill and practice, it's repetition. But it doesn't have to be a hundred multiple choice questions. It can be ten that are relevant to what you want to convey in your classroom. So this is where I think, am I right? Okay.
Yes.
There you go. I owe you ten bucks now too, right? So, but it was just, I don't know, this is going to be a good correction and we have to be thoughtful with it, which of course Amy is going to be. And yeah, I think it's going to be a big plus to the school district again.
So I was just going to add, you know, when we, you know, sometimes we use words like formative and summative and what does that really mean? And, you know, a formative is, you know, basketball, NY basketball just started. So the formative is the kids go to practice. And yes, we're not keeping score at practice and there's not a scoreboard, but they're learning those skills that they need. So when they go to the summative, the game, they figure out, all right, well, I missed all my foul shots. So then they go back to the practice, the formative, and they they learn those skills. And that's what homework is. Homework is going to the practice to learn the skills. So when they take the summative, the test, they they do better. And when, if they don't, then they know they need more practice. That's all.
The only other thing I want to say, and I know that you all probably have this covered, but I'm going to say it out loud. That way I feel better, is this is just going to have to be communicated so many different ways because the students will need to hear it, the students are going to have an interpretation that they bring home. I mean, the minute there's a change, this is just going to have to be very clearly communicated to parents and well communicated and coordinated with how the kids hear it and timed so that the kids aren't coming home and telling their parents there's been a big change before their parents have been notified because that's a bad game of telephone. You know how that goes, right? The kids come home and they say, it's this big thing. And then you get the letter and you're like, so they're grading homework, it's fine. You know what I mean? So the communication of this is going to be huge. It's going to feel like the biggest ever change to some people. It's going to feel like a very welcome change to other people. People's feelings are going to be all over the map. We just want to be clear. I'm sure that that is part of your plan. It's just very, very important.
We will, we will definitely take heed. And, you know, there's been controversy about homework for the last forty years. Forty years from now, there'll still be controversy about homework.
That might be a good Merrimack TV for the superintendent, you know.
I must have gone to school fifty years ago, Bill, because there's no controversy in my house. He sat at the kitchen table, you got that done, you know?
Yeah, that, we will cover that in a cable program. I'll have, Amy will tag team it on the cable program also. Yes.
All right, moving on to other new business.
Wait, 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 oh, sorry. I have stuff to say. Um, personally, I'm a terrible test taker, so I love homework. I love anything that can increase my grade that's not a test. Because if you're a terrible test taker and then you end up with a C in a class because you just get stressed out when you're taking a test, it's not fun. Because there's nothing that you can do to like fix it. So I think homework will be a good opportunity to provide like the extra grade cushion for kids who need that. And also, right now, I've just like, from personal observation in my classes, kids don't know how to take tests at all. They don't have the confidence in their own skills to take a test. And I think that homework will be a good opportunity in the district to build up kids' confidence in their own education and abilities. Because like I'll sit in a tack, in a class, and even in both of my AP classes this year, kids will ask thirty million questions, which if you're doing enough practice, you shouldn't have to ask that many questions in the middle of taking a summative. And that's like, that's just my opinion on it. And just to add as a personal example, in my AP math class this year, how it plays out in class is we get introduced a topic. We hate it, it's scary, it's terrible, it's AP math. But then we just do practice, 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 practice. That's how Chisholm runs the class. He just does practice with us. And normally by the end of a forty five minute period, we don't hate it so much and it's not so scary. And I think that just doing more practice for kids will help them and make them more confident in their abilities. And they'll probably be less scared of the actual content that they're learning.
Caitlin, thank you for sharing that very important perspective.
And my guess is that you do your homework.
When I have homework, yes, I do. I take any opportunity to make my test grades not be so awful.
And I think you seem to be the kind of person that's really interested in the learning. Kids don't take AP math. There's a small population that will take it for super fun, but there are others that are really interested in the learning. So thank you for sharing all of that.
There's an also even smaller population who started high school in comp algebra one and worked up to AP Calc, so.
Is that, is that you, Caitlin?
I would fall into that population, yes.
That is wonderful.
In your, in your math class, I remember when I was in high school, amazingly enough, I was in a calculus class. I don't know if it was AP or whatever the heck it was, but I had a teacher, Mr. Pasquale. And he would give homework and then we would do some classwork and he would do problems. And all of a sudden, I remember we were doing, I don't know, some crazy with little squiggle. I forget what the name of it is now, right? That's not important. It was really, really difficult. And I could all of a sudden just see what the equation meant in like the three D space that it was supposed to represent. And I don't think I made any kind of sound or noise, but he looked at me and he says, you just got it, didn't you? See, those are the teachers that are awesome. And we've got a lot of them. So giving homework as another tool that they could have practice with kids as opposed to this other protocol we had, I think is awesome.
I do have to say that's kind of like Chisholm. We all refer to him as the craziest man on the planet because there's a lot of yelling that happens in his class.
Don is crazy, yes.
There's a lot of nonsense that goes on in his class, but he does take the scary math and he makes us learn it somehow, some way. We leave the class and we know it. So, yeah.
Well, thank you. I'll probably be speaking with him pretty soon, so I'll mention that.
All right, moving on to other new business. Anything? All right. Moving on to policy, second review of pupil safety and bullying.
To this point in time, we have had no comments on that policy. Once again, the text in red represents modifications by our Labor Council, our attorneys that have great proficiency in civil rights issues also. So we really appreciate the attentiveness that you have given to policies and the pace at which we're, we're reviewing them and approving them. Because I think we've lagged in this regard for awesome years. And it's extraordinarily important that our policies be updated, all of our policies, as quickly as possible. And so we're working, I have to thank once again Sandy Swanson. Sandy is extraordinarily attentive. She's put together the great policy progress chart that might, I hope it's in your packet, but we include from time to time so that we can keep score in terms of where we are with each respective policy.
Comments from the board on this policy?
Sorry. Okay, let me say that again then. So all I was going to say is, this is really well done. But my only thing that I would add now, after reading it again, is if on the Merrimack website there was a link that said, you know, for teachers or for anyone, here's the link on how to get to the DCYF. All you do is hit the link and it goes right to the DCYF. So you have all the information you need. It would help the mandatory reporter. That's the only thing, but I liked everything else.
Any other comments from the board? All right, then we will move on to the next policy, availability and distribution of healthy foods.
Although it's not long, I think you can see it's an immeasurably improved from the former policy.
Quite a bit. Any comments from the board on this policy?
Um, the, sorry, I didn't, I have my question that I wrote down, which isn't, isn't pretty for how to say it in a meeting. So I'm like reworking it in my head right now. I've heard from a fair number of parents, and this doesn't really apply to this policy per se. Like, we wouldn't put this in the policy. But I've heard concern from parents about some of the breakfast for lunch options, which are are basically donuts. And worried about that being a, how does that meet nutritional standards? And is that a nutritionally dense option that's going to, you know, get a kid from from lunch all the way through to the end of the day? I think I like the policy. I think it's great that we're, we're talking about this and expanding upon it. But I was sort of, my, my question was, how does this new policy apply to to those? I'm, I can't imagine we're not meeting all of the requirements that we're supposed to meet with our school lunches, but that is something I've heard as a source of concern from parents.
Yeah, donuts are probably the most controversial item, along with French toast sticks and a couple of others in food service programs. But I know from past experience, and I'll have to check with our director of food services whether those are from a local vendor or from a, what used to be called, and what I think is still called, a super donut that meets certain nutritional standards according to the National School Lunch Program and the New Hampshire Department of Health and Nutrition.
I know for a fact, they're not from Dunkin' Donuts. They're usually probably from the buying group we have in Hampshire. And Dave Zicki used to be the president of the Food Service Association for the State of New Hampshire. So everything that he puts out, while not sounding really grand or nutritional or appetizing, it meets the standards, you know? We get audited on this stuff. Lady comes in, puts a probe in something, go, okay, it's good. You know, from the state, we get audited on everything. We have to show the nutritional value of that donut and put the label up there. So everything does. It may not be appetizing and creative, you know, but it does do that.
Well, and I think what I'd say is, it's, I think the people that talk about that actually would take issue with the actual standard, which is outside of our control. You know, like, those standards might have been created right around the time of this first policy and might need to be updated as well. But unfortunately, we don't have control over that.
Well, I would also say kind of along those lines, the thing that I do like about this new policy where it says opportunities to learn food preparation skills that support nationally recognized research-based nutrition standards, that leaves it open because we're finding out things all the time. Ten years ago, it was everybody who needs to eat seven to ten servings of whole grains. And now we're finding out that's way too many carbohydrates for people because it just turns into sugar. And so now the recommendations have changed from more fruits and vegetables and more dense protein and lean protein and not so many whole grains. And this policy, the way it's written, as we learn more, as the research comes out more, it allows the district to adapt and change.
It's always interesting. I always enjoy hearing the feedback of students, particularly when the various departments of education around the country were increasing nutritional standards to the extent reasonable and possible. And I remember about eight years ago, I was meeting with about thirty students at the high school in my former district in Massachusetts. And we were talking about, we used to have kind of free form meetings from time to time, which we'll, which we'll have at the high school here, starting relatively soon this year, with about thirty to thirty five students. And we would talk about options for curriculum, some electives or core courses. And this one student came up to me after about a one hour meeting with all of his peers. And he said, Mr. Olson, he said, I didn't want to say anything during our meeting. But he said, I have a real question for you and I need to have you answer. And I said, what is that, Jason? He said, what's happened to the chocolate chip cookies in the cafeteria for him? And I said, do you mean they taste like cardboard? He says, yeah, they're terrible. Will you please get rid of them? And those are the, those are the new cookies that we had to order, you know, including, you know, like Matt orders some vendors here that were meeting the new nutritional standards, but from a palatability standpoint, didn't meet the test, so.
Yeah, we don't serve the crispy fried chicken anymore. There's no fryers in our cafeterias. Those are gone. So it is quite different and it is a change. And, you know, sometimes you go to a restaurant and you go, wow, this is like the best meal ever. But if you put it up against the standards, it probably isn't as good for you as you think it is. But then again, you know, there are other ways we can attack this thing, but it's going to cost money. You're going to have to raise lunch prices. Because two years ago, three or four years ago, we were running maybe, you know, ten K over on food service. It, in order to get where you want to be, if you want to be creative, it's, the lunch price is halved, increased. Or the board could appropriate a certain sum of money to supplement the food service program because they feel it's important to do so. So this is another option for you to think about.
All right, moving on to the first review of reporting child abuse or neglect.
We'll incorporate that suggestion you have, Molly.
Any questions or comments from the board on this policy?
The only one I would have on page one of one where it says a written report has to be made, if we could say, you know, as soon as possible, within a twenty four, I know it's a twenty four hour, but if it could happen sooner than twenty four hours. I don't know how to say that they have by law twenty four hours. But if we could have that report, it's a priority report. I don't know how to change that language, but, you know, as soon as possible, but within twenty four hours. Because it sounds like we have twenty four hours. Well, really, we'd like it today. And then if we have to wait, you have by law twenty four hours. That's all.
And we can, we can incorporate that language. A report should be made as soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible, within twenty four hours. Yeah, as soon as possible, within 24 hours.
I did have just a question regarding procedures. So as the, as the policy is laid out now, a teacher would go to their principal. The principal would write the report. The teacher is still a mandatory reporter. What procedure do we have in place for that teacher to be notified that the principal has, in fact, filed that report?
I think it's probably different at every building level. And we've been talking about the mandatory training. Our Director of Student Wellness, Fern Sidon, helped earlier in the school year all of our school counselors and nurses at the elementaries. We still have a few at the high school that are going to be doing the full two and a half hour no-until training that's offered through the University of something, Fern will tell me tomorrow. And what we are hoping to provide through our new vector solutions is the mandatory reporting training for everyone else. And within that context, we'll be talking about that process. Because as you, as we noted in the policy, what we're suggesting is that the teacher go to the principal and they either make the call together, they provide, they give the information to the, to the principal. Some teachers aren't comfortable calling independently or on their own. So we want teachers and anyone that suspects abuse to feel like they have the support they need. I've called DCYF a lot in my role as a building principal. And the first time, first couple of times, it is, it is a challenge. I mean, you've been a building principal too, Lori, so you, you know that it's, you're walking a fine line between the relationship you have with a student, the family, getting people the support that they need. So I believe at each building, the process that Bill and I will make sure that is established is, how will the building principal circle back with the teacher or the person that's, that they've been told? And some people are very comfortable. In my role, there were times when I would get a call from DCYF following up on, on something that was submitted and I didn't make the call. And so it could have been a coach, it could have been someone from, you know, another local organization, but because the student is connected to a school, you know, we are, they can have access to the student. We can support them coming to a child advocacy center for interviewing if we need to. So we really do try to partner with DCYF during these troubling times. But your point is a good one, Lori, as the policy rolls out, that at the leadership meeting, we should talk to make sure that there is a common mechanism in place for principals to circle back with, with the folks that are sharing this important information.
And I agree with you said, like it's, sometimes teachers are not used to making that phone call, but that's where it's really important for the professional development, for them to understand, like it's a legal obligation, you don't have a choice. But also maybe, you know, practicing, like a fake phone call, like, you know, like have a scenario so they start to understand because some teachers might be teaching for 20 years before they have this situation. But someone might be a first-year teacher and have this situation, so, you know, but I appreciate what you said.
But also, but also just knowing that their principal is a resource, like what, I forgot now who said it, but like they can go to the office and sit with the principal and either the principal can make the call in front of them or they can themselves make the call, but either way, the call is being made and the support is there for the teacher because that's a hard thing to do. Nobody wants to do that. Even if you know something's going on with a child, you know this is a big thing. And so to be able to provide that support and know, and for teachers to know that the administration is with them on that and that everybody takes the responsibility to report seriously, so we're going to sit here and we're going to do it together. That's huge. And I would just add to that, being able to talk about it, you know, sometimes the teacher, if a student discloses something to you, obviously that relationship, they're feeling like you are a trusted adult. We want that for students. We want them, if something is not right in their life, we want them to be able to turn to a trusted adult who can help. But that trusted adult often doesn't, if they're the classroom teacher, they're often not a school counselor, haven't gone through that specialized mental health training. So they often want to then use the building principal or the school counselor or the school nurse or someone who has had more extensive training to be able to say, "This is what the student said. What kind of resources do you think we could offer to the family before calling DCYF?" We have a lot of resources here, homeschool liaisons, we have the Yes Folks, we have the student, the SEL specialists. So we have other resources that we could also tap into. So sometimes it's, it's equally supportive for the teacher who has received the disclosure to be able to have that conversation with the, with the building administrator.
Any other thoughts or comments on the policy? All right, moving on. We do not have an approval of minutes. There has been an understandable delay in transcription, so we will have those minutes at our next meeting for approval. All right, moving on to consent agenda.
We have one resignation for you to consider tonight. Health teacher from Merrimack Middle School, Stephen Chassen, has resigned his position effective Wednesday, November 23rd, 2022. He is departing the district to take an assistant principal position at a local K-8 public charter school. I know that Mr. Chassen regrets the unfortunate time of his departure, but I know that you join me in thanking him for his service to the district and wishing him well.
Moving on to approval of nurse job description.
In the previous packet, there were three job descriptions for you to review, the school nurse, school counselor, and the high school student support intervention counselor job description. And so those are provided by HR Director Melissa Fazlick and they're for your approval tonight.
So I will accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'd make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Moved by Jenna?
Second.
Second by Naomi. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye passes 400.
Thank you.
All right, committee reports. Jenna?
So I attended the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee. They do such good work. I always love that their conversations are, they're so meaningful. There, it's a short agenda, but there was a lot of conversation around these agenda items. So there was, part of what they do is, anything that wants to move forward in the district as far as technology-wise or curriculum-wise, or something that somebody wants to present, teachers can come and present and say, "This is, I think, a great idea." The educators on the committee take that all into consideration. So there was a long discussion about technology and a discussion about, you know, a vote, not a vote, but like a yea or nay on that technology. And then we got to view, and I couldn't view it because I was unfortunately driving while I was listening, but EduPlanet 21 and just see how that was, you know, set up and how that's going to really just like organize and update and bring into the year 2022 the way that we do our curriculum so that they're not in binders scattered around the district and there's no, nobody has to go on a scavenger hunt to find anything. It's all going to be in one place. Huge improvement, absolutely worth every bit of time, effort and energy that so many people are putting involved in that. And I just appreciate their thoughtful discussions.
Lori? So, so the planning and building committee has not officially met, but they've been emailing back and forth. And Rick Henrick is the chairperson and they're very excited about an upcoming meeting that they're going to be talking about our plans for moving forward in the capital improvement plan.
Matt?
You can go to the board member first because she trumps me.
Naomi?
I went to Parks and Rec Committee last week. They're doing their budget process right now too. But the, the things of note that people might be interested in are the Merrimack Holiday Parade and tree lighting is scheduled for December 4th. And then there's a, Merrimack is participating in the Southern New Hampshire Tour of Lights, which is where people who've decorated their houses can register on the Parks and Rec website between now and December 5th. And then they'll publish a list by December 9th of, if you want to like organize a drive to go all around town. And there's actually 26 different towns that are participating in this, so other towns are doing it too.
All right, Matt?
Yeah, thank you. I'm on the Town Center Committee. I have been for a number of years now. We had Stephen Keach, Civil Engineer, Keach Nordstrom, present the school district master plan redesign of the whole complex, high school complex, all the way down to Master Cola, where the new central office is going to be located, if and when that ever gets voted in. Spent around a little bit, an hour and 20 minutes talking in front of them, you know, Nelson Disco, everybody like that. They were very responsive to it. His next step is going to, because of the way we have to do business, where we have a six to eight week span in the summertime to do disruptive work. And there are this other work that can happen during the school year that's not disruptive work. Steve is going to, for the 28th, when he meets with, in front of the Planning and Building Committee, going to put together finally the timeline with some sort of engineering cost estimate of which domino needs to fall first and the sequence of events and when it's going to happen. Like number one is going to be the demolition of Brentwood. That's a given, okay? There are other things like we want to bury the utilities in the parking lot of the high school. So that's going to be a thing that can almost be done in the summertime if you get the right group of people and the right contractors and everything together. So that's going to be part of the proposal too. And then we have to deal with the blue house, the greenhouse, and then the eventual construction of the central office. We're using the old plans by Frank Maranese because it gave us a pretty good idea of the footprint of the building. And it fits real nicely at the end of O'Gara Drive. You don't have to shoehorn that thing in. That piece of property is a lot bigger than you think it is. There's also an opportunity to, because Steve is creating more spaces closer to the football field, the concession stand, it'll be right back up into that fence where we can actually remove some pavement at the end of the high school parking lot. And I'm not sure if everybody knows, but at the end of the high school parking lot, we own an acre of land that's all wooded. So we could remove the pavement. We could blow out the trees that are on that acre. And it would be, you can fit a soccer field there all day long. There's tons of room if you want to do that in the future. So there's going to be plenty of things like that that's going to be up for discussion and what the sequence of events would be. And I'm, I'm, I'm kind of looking forward to it myself. So we'll see what Steve has to, what rabbit he can pull out of his hat for next, next Monday. And we'll be presenting it to, to the board. So, thank you.
All right, and the Professional Development Committee met on November 10th. Of course, I feel so bad being on that committee. I had to visit a teacher conference all day, so I did not get to attend that, that meeting. But I get all of the emails and the conversation, discussion. And I just want everyone out in the public to understand, the Professional Development Committee works very, very hard to ensure that our teachers are doing high-quality professional development, whether that's graduate-level courses or other expansion of their knowledge and skill sets. And it's taken very, very seriously. And I appreciate that the, the work that they are doing, and our teachers are always growing, learning. They, they are lifelong learners. And they, they don't, you know, relish being in a 10-week class at SNHU that they get to do at night on top of, of their full-time job. It's not why they're doing it. They're doing it for the benefit of students. And so the Professional Development Committee takes every one of those requests and submissions very seriously.
I did attend the Professional Development Committee. And we also considered service learning projects at the last meeting, which some of you may know that that is money that each school is allotted to be able to do something within their building. And so they had a lot of really thoughtful and creative projects that came forward and they were approved, one at each building. So at the next meeting, I'm sure we'll get an update.
All right, correspondence. Well, we all got one regarding a thank you on the leadership putting up the restraint and seclusion report from the DOE. And I also received a request asking for an update based on what my budget priority was, which was allocation of resources, resources and personnel in relation to our existing enrollment. And I said that that is beginning now as part of our budget process. Any other correspondence? All right, comments from the board?
I just have one, you know, when Matt was talking earlier today about going to the Town Center Committee meeting, I know that, you know, a lot of times in general, we just lump it together like all our thank yous, but I think it's really important that he's been with this district for so many years and he has that long history. And it's, it's really appreciative for, I just appreciate him so much because he'll go, oh, and, you know, 1986, you know, we, we were going to cut this tree down. And, and so I'm grateful that, for your, for your long-term service and that depth of knowledge that is so important because you can tie it all together like, oh, well, the board, three boards ago voted this way. So thank you.
It's like one of the, I'll give you a tree cutting story. The back parking lot of Master Cola Elementary School, the way it is configured now, we had that redesigned by VHB. And I had to cut down the White Pines project that was associated with UNH and Ann La Croix. They were measuring these trees for like 20 years. I thought she was going to cry in my office. And Ann, if you're listening, you're still, still around, still in Merrimack. I'm sorry for that, but it just, they just had to go, so.
May I just say that, you know, my, my area of concentration for decades has been school finance and operations facilities. And I've told Matt this a number of times. He is one of the most knowledgeable and skilled people in this field that I've, I've ever had the opportunity to work with. Absolute delight working with him.
And I would agree with that 100%. I just have one comment myself, just as a reminder. Our, we usually meet the first and third Monday of the month. We will not be meeting the first Monday in December because on December 12th, we have decided to have our school board meeting. We will have a portion of that meeting as a joint meeting with the Budget Committee. We have a light agenda for the rest of our meeting that night. But it should be an exciting time. It'll be at the Merrimack High School Cafeteria. The public is welcome to come at 7:00 PM. Otherwise, you'll be able to see it on Merrimack TV. Any other comments from the board? All right, well, with that, I will turn it over to the public. Either of the two gentlemen who are sitting in our audience would like to come to the mic, feel free. All right, well, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved by Jenna?
Second.
Second by Naomi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
400. Good night and thank you.
Good night. Thank you.